Yeah, thank you, and we'll start this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an independent advisory body of the City of Ames City Council. The Planning and Zoning Commission members are volunteers of the community and not part of the city administration. The Planning and Zoning Commission is supported by staff from the city's planning division. The commission is responsible for recommendations on matters involving subdivisions, annexations, master plans, and major site development plans, amendments to the zoning ordinance, and comprehensive plan amendments. We make our recommendations based on city codes, the facts presented, and input from the public. As an advisory commission, we welcome all comments regarding the proposed item. Please direct your input to the commission. If the proceedings become lengthy, we may ask that the comments be focused on new information not previously presented. You may speak only once on an agenda item. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker information card and present it to the recording secretary. We ask that you come to the microphone to speak so that all comments may be recorded. The order of the proceeding for each item on the agenda will be as follows. City staff will present the staff report regarding the agenda item. Commission members will have an opportunity to ask questions of city staff. The applicant will be invited to make a statement regarding the request. Commission members will have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. Members of the audience will be invited to come forward to offer comments and questions. Once public comment is closed, city staff and applicant will have an opportunity for concluding remarks. The commission will discuss the application based on all presentations and any comments given, and come to a recommendation for city council. Discussion may include further questions of city staff and the applicant for clarification. And with that, we'll move into the first item on the agenda, which is introduction of commission members.
Julie Winter.
Cheryl Moss.
Mike Clayton.
Mike Sullivan.
Matthew Voss.
All right, and then we'll move to item three on the agenda, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And now we'll move, does anyone have a motion to approve the minutes of October 15, 2025?
Move approval of minutes.
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes of October 15, 2025, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And now we'll open it for public forum. If there's anyone from the audience that wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please step forward to the microphone, and this is your opportunity to do so. All right, seeing none, we will close the public forum, and we move on to Agenda Item Six. And due to a conflict of interest, I will be recusing myself for the discussion and vote for Agenda Item Six, and Matthew Voss will be serving as chair.
All right, so for Agenda Item Six, rezone for 220 to 400 Freel Drive from General and Industrial GI to Government/Airport District SGA.
All right, so for this case, the city is the applicant, so the planning staff, Parker's going to present the project, but the city is the applicant. We do have representation here from the Public Works Department, which runs the Resource Recovery Plant and would be the operator of the transfer plant here, if there's questions related to that. And with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Parker to present the rezoning.
Good evening, everyone. Parker Walsh, new Assistant Planner on Staff. And as Chair mentioned, tonight I'll be going over the rezoning request for the properties located at 220, 306, 312, 316, and 400 Freel. This is a rezoning request from the existing General Industrial to Government Airport. Proposed properties are outlined and shown here. There's five of them, making up approximately 9.5 acres. The properties are currently zoned General Industrial as is much of the surrounding area and what's being proposed as a rezoning to Government Airport. The future land use map does identify this area as employment in the Ames 2040 Plan, and that would be consistent with General Industrial. That's one of the use designations that's allowed to fall under this category, as is Government Airport. The Government Airport District is a zoning designation that's entirely recommended for the properties that are owned by schools or government entities. And in this case, the city has purchased the lots and fulfilled that requirement. And the city does intend to construct a resource recovery and recycling campus, also referred to as a transfer station. The intent of this is to accept municipal solid waste, recyclable materials, and yard waste from residents and commercial haulers. The materials would then be transferred and disposed off-site. A transfer station is a facility that is permitted within General Industrial, and it would be compatible and consistent if rezoned to Government Airport. And the new development would trigger some improvements, mainly through paving, and the applicant would be required to pave down through the entire frontage, which would at least be 400 Freel. But the city does anticipate paving the entire remaining gap all the way through the intersection of Southeast Fifth Street. The site is also within the 100-year floodplain, but staff will review that during site plan. And if the following were to be rezoned, they can move forward with lot consolidation and eventually their site plan for staff review. The request for rezoning to, or is consistent with the adopted Ames Plan 2040, and therefore staff does recommend Alternative One, which is to recommend approval of the rezoning application. That concludes the presentation, and I'll turn it over to the commission.
Any questions for city staff?
Could you clarify the part about the floodplain a little bit? What needs to be done or what doesn't have to be done about?
So we will evaluate that at site plan, but more than likely, they'll need to bring up grade in certain areas or do some level of flood protection, and staff will review that during site plan.
So we have, the city will comply with its own flood protection standards, so there's no exemption from the flood, floodplain management ordinance by going to SGA. So it'll be treated the same regardless of the base zone for our flood protection standard, just like every other use in the city.
So would that take into consideration any potential fallout from a flood with hazardous waste or just waste in general being there?
The point of the floodplain ordinance is to protect the facility from inundation during up to a 100-year flood. And then the city has of its own standards, we go above and beyond the minimum requirements. So we, instead of having just to be above the base flood elevation, we have a three-foot protection standard, so we go three feet above what the base flood elevation is from a 100-year event. But it's about protecting improvements on the site. It doesn't deal with like a mitigation plan if, if a hazard or an accident were to occur on the property.
Just one question for staff. Is the proposed land use compatible with neighboring parcels?
It is, yeah. Much of the surrounding areas, industrial services, and this use type would be compatible with those uses.
Thank you.
All right, so then you mentioned staff from Public Works are here.
I think we're there just as a resource for questions. I think, yeah, I would move to public comment.
Okay. Sounds good. So at this time, if anyone from the public would like to come up and speak on this agenda item, now is the time to do so.
Efficiently, I think we go in the public hearing.
Opening the public hearing.
I'm here this evening to voice some concerns. My wife, Lori, and I are the owners.
Could you state your name and address?
We're the owners of 118 Freel Drive. It's the only occupied residency on that street. We have several concerns from traffic, flood, odor, but mostly a concern with the, what it does to the value of that property as a resident. It's currently occupied by my wife's parents, Tom and Sandy Warren, and they have concerns with staying there with the, the increased traffic and, and all the things that come with this project. So the real question I have is, is, does, is the continuation of this product by the city contingent on this zoning change?
I think, right now, this isn't the public forum, it's not a time for Q and A, but that question can, could be addressed.
Okay, okay. Like I said, I, I just want to, I want to go on the record as being opposed to it, simply because of the diminished value of that property down there. At some point, it's going to be sold as a resident, and it is zoned residential industrial. And just, we had concerns about the impact of this project and this zoning change on the value of that property. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Should we have any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and if staff have any other comments on the item.
I can respond to that, that question about the rezoning. So if the, the project, or whether it was a private version or a public version, the current zoning would permit waste processing and transfer as a special use within the GI Zone. That was one of our arguments for compatibility of going to SGA, as the zone already would allow the use. The reason the city does SGA is it does create flexibility for unique municipal uses in different categories across the city. We've usually used that for city, for city properties, and then that way, city council's making decisions about uses. If the zoning was not to occur, the city could still proceed with the use, it would go to the zoning board of adjustment for approval, would, would be the mechanism to get to that. Same idea, still doing a site plan review, still having the same standards, you're going through an extra review process instead of the process that we're talking about tonight.
For clarity, so then will the site plan come before the city council, even if it is in SGA?
The way, the way projects are approved within SGA is the site plan doesn't get formally approved the way we do for private projects, but council has to approve the plans and specifications for it to get bid as a project, and then they award the contract. So they're, they're approving the plan before it goes out to bid versus a private project, the city is approving it before the private entity go chooses to, to go build the project.
Any idea about the traffic? Will it increase?
Can we talk about the truck traffic? And we can answer that question, expected truck traffic and things, yeah, we can answer that. Why do that just? This is Justin Clausen, our Public Works Director, so he can answer questions about the projections for the operation.
Good evening, commission members. Thank you for the time tonight. So this facility will receive probably between 35 and 45 Packer trucks per day. That's the trucks that come around and get your garbage at your, and municipal waste at your local residence and bring it to our facility. So those are typically coming in anywhere between 5:30 in the morning, and usually they're, most of them are there before 11:00 AM. So they come really early. But what we see is if you've been to our existing facility, there's not a lot of queuing that's there. We don't have a lot of driveway length. We are right off Center Street and Second Drive, or Second Avenue there. So we will see some increased truck traffic that will come down this way. The trucks that will leave to go take the waste away to a landfill, we expect five to six trucks per day that are leaving the facility. So you're probably in that, in that range of between 40 and 50 trucks per day that will be in and out along Freel Drive. So if you've been down there, there are a lot of trucks that are to use this with, with other salvage and other uses down there. So our plan is not only to improve the roadway in the area, that's, that's in dire need of that, but also try to be a good neighbor here and understand that we're, we're, we're changing, you know, some of the, the, those traffic patterns, but we don't think we're going to have queuing on the streets based off the length that we bring trucks into the facility. There'll be a scale house there. Based off our 50-year history at the existing Resource Recovery Center, we don't think we'll have any challenges with those vehicles on the street.
Are there any, besides vehicles, how about noise? Is this mechanism going to be a noise-producing?
It, so it, it will. We will do minor processing of the, of the solid waste. So if you're familiar with our existing plant, it's, it's a very major processing equipment. We're taking municipal solid waste the size of chairs and bringing it down to the size of a golf ball. We won't be doing that large of a process anymore. It's a minor shred where we're going to remove the metals. And so that, that noise that we're going to make is going to be during operating hours. It's going to be Monday through Friday during, during daylight business working hours. We don't operate overnight. We won't be operating 24 hours a day like we do right now with the power plant. So there will be some noise, but we, we're also regulated by, by noise, you know, noise ordinance in the city as well, so we have to follow that, which we, we plan to do.
Okay.
Thank you. Any additional questions? I guess I would just say I'm sympathetic to the gentleman's comment, but I think this does fit well with the General Industrial of the, the predominant properties in this area. So I'm inclined to support it.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And my understanding then is that should that property be sold, that it could also be sold as industrial as well as residential?
The speaker's property? Their property is zoned industrial, it has a non-conforming residential use on it.
Okay. So at this time, does anyone have a motion? Or is there any more discussion?
I would make a motion to approve Alternative One. The Planning and Zoning Commission can recommend that city council approve the request to rezone the properties located at 220, 306, 312, 316, and 400 Freel Drive from GI General Industrial to SGA Government Airport District.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion passes.
All right, so this item will go to city council. I believe it's planned for November 18th for the first reading of the rezoning ordinance. And if you're interested in the project, definitely pay attention to updates that the Public Works Department provides. We don't have a site plan tonight, but that's something that's going to, is in process to be developed, and that'll obviously be available for people to, to review and understand before it gets built. So again, if you're interested, stay in contact with us.
All right, and with that, we'll move to item seven on the agenda, zoning text amendment for single-family design standards within the South Lincoln Mixed Use District.
Earlier this year, council gave direction to staff to allow for a resident of the South Lincoln Subarea Mixed Use District, or the SMD, to apply for a text amendment. Mr. Gregory, who is here this evening, owns the home at, owns his home as 129 Washington Avenue, which is at the corner of South Second Street. Mr. Gregory's intent is to demolish the existing home and to rebuild a new one, which would trigger compliance with the existing standards in that district. Mr. Gregory met with, has met with staff about his proposed design and discovered that his, his intended plans for the home did not comply with the existing standards in SMD. Many of the issues are related to the fact that this is a corner lot, and there are some design standards that apply to the, the two facades that face the street. The SMD District was created in 2003 to create a mixed-use district in response to a master plan that the city did for that neighborhood. Council did authorize a, a text amendment for this neighborhood only for single and two-family dwellings. So multifamily and commercial development are not part of the proposed changes for, with this text amendment. Staff is proposing a number of changes that would allow Mr. Gregory to build his intended design. The first is a change to Article Four that deals with through lots and corner lots. This would exempt single and two-family homes in the SMD District from having to have setbacks. The, the second change would be to the minimum setbacks on side streets. So this would be on South Second Avenue in this case. The proposed home that Mr. Gregory intends to build does face Washington Avenue like the existing home does, and so this would reduce the setback, the side setback from 25 to 15 feet. The next change is allowing for longer, basically walls. The, the current, the current standards have rules about building form. So you have, you can have a wall that extends for so far, currently it's 40 feet, before you have to have an offset essentially to prevent, you know, big masses of, of building. So this would change the standard, increase it from 40 feet, which it is currently, to 48 feet. And then a related standard says that for, after that current 40 feet, you have to have a setback in your building massing about eight feet. The change that is proposed would amend that from eight feet to four feet. And then the last change is removing the requirement for, for roofs that face a secondary street, or for a secondary facade, they, they currently have to either have a gable or dormers. And the, the intent there is, you know, part of the, part of their intent with SMD was to keep the new development in character with the existing, existing, you know, residential architecture that is there, which is when many of the older homes, you see some bungalows, you see some kind of, you know, four-square homes there that, that had those architectural elements to them. Mr. Gregory's text amendment request did ask that the, the changes for the roofs for the gable ends and for dormers be changed for all roofs. Staff is only proposing to change those for secondary facades. That would still allow Mr. Gregory's intended design to be built without any changes, but his, his amendment did request it for all, so this would, staff's proposed text amendment would leave that in place for primary facades. And I can take any questions you have.
Any questions for city staff?
So there, there is an applicant for this particular project.
Remind our steps. Yep, so at this time, we'll invite the applicant, if present, to come up and make a statement regarding this agenda item.
I'm Jim Gregory, 129 Washington Avenue. We, we, our current house is a two-bedroom house, is built in 1920. It, it's not very senior-friendly, and so our intention is to take the house down and build a three-bedroom house so that my wife, myself, and my mother-in-law, who's elderly, could all live together in a very senior-friendly house in a very walkable neighborhood. Right now, the, when, when, when this area was rezoned back in 2003, we, we participated in a lot of the meetings at the time, and the intent was, when the area was rezoned, was to combine these lots together and build bigger buildings. But on a corner lot like ours, where it's just a single-family house, those zoning, those zoning laws really don't apply very well to our, to a house like ours. So we're requesting these changes to make it, make it suitable to build a three-bedroom, single-level house on a, on a property like this. I, I endorse, I endorse the changes they recommend. I, I think the suggestion of having a gable and just on the primary facade, but not the secondary facade, I think that's probably a good idea. And so, take any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. All right, now we'll offer members of the audience, if anyone in the audience would like to offer comments or questions on this agenda item, we'll open the public hearing. All right, seeing none, we will move on. Are there any concluding remarks by staff or the applicant? All right, discussion from the commission. Seeing none, do, do we have a motion?
I'll move Alternative One, that, that the, the board recommends that the city council amends the regulations for Section 29.402, parent four, setbacks on through lots and corner lots, and the, and the development requirements in Table 29.1003, parent three, with the South Lincoln Subarea Mixed Use District, SMD, with the changes to with the changes to the roofs only applied to secondary facades based on the proposed changes as shown in attachment A.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to agenda item eight, preliminary plat with amendment for 3300 University Boulevard.
You may remember from a year ago, those of you who are here, the, we saw a project on this site. This is at 3300 University Boulevard, at the intersection there with Cottonwood Road. We just saw an application last month for 3200, for a major site plan, and the preliminary plat, we are seeing very preliminary plat this evening for 3300 for the site plan, site that's already in development. The site plan we already approved. The, this two-acre property is currently under development. You can see here, there are two apartment buildings. North is to the left here in this, this image here. There are two apartment buildings, each with eight units along University Boulevard. And then to the east, which is up top here, there are three sets of triplexes or townhomes that, that back up to the Tedesco Environmental Learning Corridor, which is a county park, actually. It is not a city park. And when the, when the site plan was reviewed by the commission last year, and this was also part of a rezoning from the, the former District Research Industrial Park to the current floating zone, floating suburban residential medium density with a PUD. And, let's see, this is the full site with its intended landscaping. Similarly to 3200, the sister property to the north, the intent now is to break off the, or is to subdivide the property with individual lots for, one lot for each of the townhome units, and then one lot each for the two apartment buildings. So there would be 11 lots, nine lots for the townhomes, two more lots for the apartment buildings, and then an outlot, which would contain shared common space, drainage to the south there. It would contain some parking spaces for the apartment buildings, the parking garage, or the, not the parking garage, but the garage building, rather, in between those apartment buildings as well. Nothing about the actual site itself is proposed to change. So it doesn't change any buildings, doesn't change anything about the utilities or traffic flow, nothing about the density, no new units are being added or subtracted from the site. It's just subdividing the existing site, which will enable individual units, the townhome units to be sold. And I believe that the intent is still to, for the apartment buildings, you could, you know, an individual building could be sold, but the intent is still to rent those out. There are a few deviations that are being approved with this preliminary plat. This, this will be along, so we have lots that are created that aren't on a public street. And there are, the, the lots for the, the lots for the townhomes also don't front on the public right-of-way. The required parking for the town, or sorry, for the apartment buildings will not be on the same lot, which they're required to be. And the, there will be a, an accessory structure on the outlot there. Normally, outlots are non-buildable, but since that building is not habitable, staff found that that could, that we could approve it this way. And then there will be setbacks along the lots one through nine, where the townhomes will be, that would be different than what you'd see ordinarily in FSRM, which is the base zoning district. And staff does recommend approval, and I can take any questions you have.
Any questions for city staff?
The applicant is here tonight as well.
I guess I just have a general comment that it really looks like there's not a lot of setback there, and it makes sense that it is deviated from the standard. It's just a general comment, especially as you're going around that roundabout, those buildings are going to come up.
Yeah, and these aren't the building footprints, these are the lot lines. So the, on the, the apartment buildings, they are, the setbacks along University Boulevard is 10 feet. And those, the property lines extend out 10 feet from the buildings. So this is the, you can see here a little better where the buildings are in proximity to the property lines.
It's a really, really dense site plan.
All right, at this time, I guess if there's no other questions for city staff, we'll invite the applicant up to make a statement on this request.
Good evening, Commissioner. Justin Dodge, Hunsicker Companies, 105 South 16th Street. Yeah, the site plan's already been approved, the buildings are already under construction. What, what we're talking about tonight is the preliminary plat, so that way we can separate those lots off, and so that way they can be sold. Initially, we thought that we were going to have one owner for the entire site. And then, fast forward to today, we know that we've got two different owners on the eight plexes, and potentially up to nine different owners on the townhomes. But what's nice about that is it opens it up for owner occupied on the townhomes. And so, right in line with what you just saw at your last meeting for 3200, when we had preliminary plat on the site just to the north, this, this one approved. So, as I said, it, it's more of a, a formality to allow the mechanism to split things off to be sold. Happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Nope, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'd invite anyone from the audience to come up if they'd like to make a statement or comment or question on this request. We'll open the public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and offer the city, or applicant, to offer any concluding remarks. All right, seeing none, we'll open it up to discussion from the commission.
So it sounds like the density issue is a done deal.
Yeah, yeah, that ship has sailed, I remember, previously.
Any other comments, discussion? Okay, do we have a motion?
I would move to recommend alternative one. The Planning and Zoning Commission may recommend that the City Council approve the preliminary plat for Discovery Place, first edition.
Second.
All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Now we'll move to item nine on the agenda, which is zoning text amendment to allow rock mulch in landscape planters.
All right, so tonight we are reviewing a text amendment to our landscape standards that was requested through the referral process by the ISU Research Park. They had completed a project recently, and there was use of a rock mulch product and a, and a required planter, and the city traditionally has not permitted the use of that mulch material. And the Research Park requested that, that the City Council consider a change. As part of that process, it was agreed to allow for an application to change it. Because of the nature of landscaping, we apply that across the city in multiple zoning districts. So there's no unique element that it only applies to the Research Park or some kind of narrow application. So this text amendment is of citywide application, applies to every commercial and residential project that would get built going forward. And then it also would apply to anybody who wants to alter an existing, man, an existing required landscape planter that might already have been in place. So in 2017 is when we redid our, all of our landscape standards and included, or we continued the requirement to use an organic mulch material for, for areas that are below or, below plantings of either shrubs, decorative or ornamental grasses or trees. You can't use mulch as your primary landscaping material. It's only to be essentially in place of ground cover below other planting materials. So in this case, in 2017, it was a topic of discussion at that time. We had a consulting landscape architect involved in our update project, and we kind of evaluated what the trade-offs are. And in 2017, the City Council decided to continue with that mulch requirement. But now, as proposed in 2025, we're looking to allow for the rock mulch. So that, at the end of the staff report, this is not from Ames, but it was very gratuitous to have a project in another town that can clearly demonstrate the difference here between how the two landscaping approaches work. The exact same corner, exact same plant materials, just that eventually they switched out from mulch to rock, and you can see how that looks. And then we have this, this, other examples from, from across the street. And then one that just shows you how a landscape planter in a parking lot that is compliant with a ground cover requirement and use of mulch rather than rock would look in, in the city if we were to do that today. So I think staff's initial support for organic mulch in 17 was really that it was viewed as the, as the, as the best environment for the vitality of plants, but from, obviously from other communities and everyone's experience, plants do grow in rock mulched beds as well. Probably the more key element of our landscape update is we did set a minimum organic content for soil in the landscape planters. So the landscape architect emphasized the organic soil is way more valuable than the, the mulch product that is going on top. So that has seemed to be, resulted in some superior landscaping since 2017, having that soil condition requirement that we did not have before. I think our landscaping generally has been better in terms of its health since 2017, and I think it's pretty much based on that soil requirement more so than the mulch. The one concern that staff has in terms of allowing for the rock mulch is that we are, this is really incumbent upon staff, to implement the intent of the landscape regulations, again, as mulch is not landscaping. So the expansive use of rock is not going to be considered a substitute for your actual landscaping requirements. So if staff reviews landscape plans, we'll have to be probably a little more precise on understanding exact, not understanding, but enforcing the expectation that it's more confined to the specific areas where it's really an under, an element under other landscape materials, and you're not just kind of, oh, it'd be more convenient to have 10 feet of, of extra rock on the side and not put ground cover into that. That's not the intent. So we're recommending approval at this point. We've tweaked the language a little bit to try to emphasize that the rock is a substitute for organic mulch. It is subject to review, again, of being confined to those planting areas. Ground cover plants are still required, they're the primary landscaping material. And again, rock won't be a substitute for that. So happy to take any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for city staff?
I see that there are a lot of, you've provided a lot of great pictures. I will say that, that it's really nice to see those. I guess not having been around for that conversation that happened in 2017, you said?
Yep.
My two initial concerns when I see this from an aesthetics viewpoint is weeds. And I understand that weeds can grow in mulch just as it can in rock. But sometimes rock just, I don't know, seems to get a lot more weeds. I have rock and mulch in my yard, and if you provide a good thick layer of mulch, that may be a personal preference. The second thing, as I think about hot summers, walking across a park, a parking lot, like in that last picture, I feel like the mulch sometimes just provides a nice break from the eye with, with that kind of landscaping. And the rock is also going to be very, very hot in the parking lot. But I do understand that we're not talking about massive amounts of rock beds. You still have to have trees or shrubs or other types of...
So I specifically put this one in here because I think this is what will not be approvable because they're using rock as, as the landscaping. So it's, yeah, there's a tree, but it's a 40-foot-long planter with one tree in it. And using rock to cover 40 feet of space is not the intent of the landscape code. So there should be some other low-growth plants there to kind of break up the aesthetics, and then also to, you know, again, that's why we have plants for aesthetics and then for cooling effects in the parking lot. So this is a good example of what I don't believe we're trying to approve. This would be worst case, if you don't pay attention and you just allow for all planters to be rock regardless of what's there, that's this. And it's not uncommon to see, but it's going to take some, what I think you end up with is this one probably had some other plants in it. They died and were never replaced.
And then that's not going to be enforced by the city.
Rarely, it's complaint-driven.
Correct.
So there's, there's two, there's two times when your, when your site gets addressed for compliance. One, if there was truly a complaint, like you cut down all your trees in the front yard, someone complained, city's going to go back and say, you got to plant all your required trees. You might get fined for doing that. The other one would be is if you ever do an improvement to the site, you have to bring your site back into compliance if it is not in compliance with your landscape plan. So if you did a parking lot alteration, we go, well, you don't have everything here you're supposed to have, you'd have to improve it. So it is, it is not a frequent occurrence to get improvements once someone comes out of compliance.
On the, using rock, I, I remember hearing that you have to have considerable depth of rock in order to keep the weeds at bay, that rock is a good mulch if you have this much. Whereas if you just have a short covering of rock, it doesn't block the weeds. Is there any consideration of the depth of the rock?
We do not specify depth for organic mulch. We do not have a weed barrier requirement in our landscape code, so we don't propose a rock mulch depth either. I mean, the same, same argument applies to organic mulch. If you put one piece of bark across the top, it's not stopping any weeds. So we currently do not have any standards about weed, weed prevention in the landscape ordinance.
Is the proposed change being driven by cost? I assume that rock mulch is less expensive than organic mulch?
I think it's the flip side of that, or the, the opposite of that, at least on initial. So I think, so the Research Park brought this forward because of a compliance issue. The cost of remediating that compliance issue would have been substantial. They did a lot of things consistent, but this section was not specified correctly and got installed incorrectly. However, outside of the Research Park, there have been repeated requests annually from different developers that would prefer to do rock. Their argument is, yeah, it's actually going to cost me more on day one. I do save on long-term maintenance. On occasion, there's a stability issue, they believe rock is a little, it's going to, the weight's going to keep it there a little bit more. So some people prefer it, even though it's more expensive, we just have never permitted it. So it's not just the Research Park's compliance issue. I, I think there's other developers that will do it just because they prefer the material.
I think I know the answer already, but there's no specifics about what kind of rock. I mean, gravel is not as aesthetically pleasing as, you know, different rock that...
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't propose anything about rock specifications of, of any type, whether it's brick chip, whether it's river rock, whether it's a gray, a granite color, limestone, none of that's specified. I don't, that's, if that was a recommendation, we could look at that. I'm not personally familiar with specific rock-type recommendations or requirements in zoning.
I mean, so they could just take whatever is crushed gravel at the quarry, almost what's being used for trail projects and things like that, and other unpaved recreational things. They could, they could use that according to the proposed text change.
This only applies to landscape planters. So just, just the areas where we mandate you have landscaping. So just, just the areas where we mandate you have landscaping. Like if you were in, like the research, actually the, the building the Research Park is looking at, they actually have rock areas in front of the building that are extra decorative areas. They're not regulated by this in the first place. It was because this was a specific requirement on the site. So there is some freedom now to do extra if you wanted to aesthetically, but it doesn't even apply to trails or walkways or anything.
No, just thinking in terms of where, where other people may have seen that type of rock I'm thinking of that's commonly used on a trail. That could be used in this type of design then.
Again, we're not specifying any particular color type, anything about the rock itself.
Yeah.
So the two questions I had, I guess, so I guess I'm not familiar with the term rock mulch. Is that, will that be defined somewhere or is it just an industry term or what, what does that, I mean, I, from the pictures, I can tell what we think it means, I guess. But is that concerning that it's not defined, I guess?
I'm not.
Okay.
Mulch, mulch is a known term, right? So I, I would say that's the phrase that people use in the, in the, in our development review process when they suggest they don't want to do bark or organic material. They'll say, can I use rock as the mulch? So it kind of just turns into the statement of rock mulch.
Sure, okay.
It's probably not a completely accurate, horticultural term.
Right. As long as everyone knows what it means. And then I guess the part about within planters immediately around shrub, shrubs and trees. Is that, does that need further definition or does it, phrasing it that way, I guess, allow city staff some flexibility in what gets, what complies with this or not?
So they got, this picture would be a great example. So with that phrase, you can't go out 20 feet from the, from the trunk and say you're immediately adjacent to that. So should it be a three foot circle, a five foot circle? I don't know. That's what we'll work through with the applicant, depending on the planner. I mean, if there's a, if it's a six foot planner and they're going to do four feet of mulch with rock, what's the last two feet? Like there's going to be some interplay there. So I think the flexibility. I know the developers will appreciate it and puts just a little bit of pressure on staff of trying to decipher what's acceptable. But I think that's the best, best I can do.
Yeah.
We could, we could say no more than four feet or three feet from a, from a tree if we wanted to.
Yeah, I think as long as you have a process for staff being consistent, I mean, I think leaving the flexibility there is a good, good thing.
Okay. And it won't just be trees too. I think it's written that way because you could do a row of shrubs or a, a set or a cluster of like ornamental grasses and have all the rock interspersed with that as well.
Any other questions for city staff? Okay. Is the Research Park the applicant in this?
They are technically the.
Okay.
It will apply citywide, but they are the applicant.
Okay. I don't think that they are here, but if.
When I looked earlier, I did not see a representative.
Yep. Well, we'll invite them to come up if they are. Seeing none, we'll move forward. So we'll offer anyone from the audience, if there's anyone in the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, feel free to come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and we'll open the public hearing. Seeing none, we'll move on. Are there any concluding remarks from city staff? There are none. All right. Any discussion?
I think, just my personal opinion, this is, this is a no for me and I'll just be willing to be a nay on this. But I think that there are absolutely no safeguards in place to keep that from happening after vegetation dies out. I recognize that it's a complaint based system and other things, but we all know ornamental grass, especially in a hot parking lot like that, like that, the chances that stuff is going to die out. It's probably going to be pretty common when we start to use it. I also think there's really no safeguard in place for the type of rock or it just seems like we really do have such a nice town when you talk about mulch right now. And again, I can't, I wasn't here for the 2017 discussion, but my gut is telling me that this might not be something that would be good for the community, especially if it's not necessarily about the cost of it up to this point. So. That's just my, my only comment there.
Any other discussion?
I, I think I tend to agree that, and it's the aesthetic part of it that, and not knowing the specifics of the type of rock or the depth of the rock. I can think of my husband's workplace trying rock as in a certain part in the window wells or something. And it really was important to have a certain depth to it and things like that. And I just don't feel like we're, we have enough specifics to really guide the city staff on this at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I'll say, I think usually I tend towards just allowing flexibility. But yeah, since cost isn't necessarily the, you know, a limiting factor here. I do think the aesthetics, I guess, just weigh a lot more. So I guess I could go either way, but right now I'm tending towards opposing recommended alternative.
If we went with alternative three, would that be something that, or, you know, addressing the aesthetics, would it be in the depth and the types of rock and so forth? Would that be something the city could, could address?
If that was the motion, we'd probably look into that and I don't know, give options to council about what that could include if they wanted to include it. So if, if that was your motion, then we would, we would look into that. And then again, it would go to council and come back to you necessarily, but they would have to decide what to do with that.
I have concerns for just a different reason entirely. Two of the others on the agenda seem to address a very specific case, which they then can be applied in a much broader way without the intended consequences fully understood. So for that reason, any other questions? I would not support this one.
Yeah, be in favor of that as well. And again, our, our recommendation is just a recommendation to council. Council can do with it what they may. They may still approve it. But, yeah.
So does anyone have any, I guess, specific thoughts on modified line? Like if, if there is going to be a motion for three, do we have any specifics in mind as what that might look like? Or what we'd like, what we'd recommend to be considered?
I think we'd want to see rock depth, rock type. I don't know if we want to get into the amount of area, like a maximum amount of area that.
Of, of the things you've discussed, and again, you guys can recommend what, rock depth to me, when we have no mulch depth standard to start with, does it quite go with the request? I, I understand all the other comments specifically about aesthetics, extent, all of that stuff. Obviously those are things that are easier to address. Depth is one that I think is a little different.
Okay.
I just really wish we had the information that was provided a few years ago about, like, I wonder if plants are as viable in this kind of a setting as they would be with organic mulch. Like, I know that, you know, like with some trees, you're not supposed to put mulch right up next to the, the trunk and maybe rock would be better in that sense, but, but I just don't know.
I think I captured, I don't know that you're missing a whole lot more than that paragraph I have here, which is one, two, three, the, the one that says in 2017. That is really almost exactly out of that staff report in terms of what our consultant had to say is, yes, mulch is better. You, you can't say things can't survive in rock though, at the same time. And that's where he led us towards the soil. Again, I think which is clearly the, clearly it's a harsher environment, especially like in the parking lot planner. I think in the larger front yard landscaping settings, it doesn't seem to be, and like the, it doesn't seem to be as significant in terms of, of aesthetics or even the harshness of, of that environment. And that's why I believe the 2017 council elected to keep the organic mulch requirements. They just didn't see a benefit. Even though it had been discussed and requested at that time. So I think that's the
Yeah.
The, the difference is you have your eight years later and do people still have the same value or not?
Yeah, I mean, even the, the second to last page picture with the retaining wall, like both pictures look good, but if aesthetically, you ask me to choose which picture looks good, especially knowing that that mulch will probably be redone every couple of years. That mulch picture looks nice. It just does. The, the rock looks okay. It has no weeds in it right now, of course, but I mean, yeah, I guess that's just my personal eye on things. I don't know.
That's it. And I'm not, again, I'm not trying to shift you one way or the other here. I would say from comments from developers, the sloped planters are ones where they like the con, they potentially like the idea of the rock, not washing down the hillside. But what you said is absolutely true about replenishment and keeping it fresh. That's generally how it, how it works.
That's something that really makes this community look, as I think back now on all the developments and the fact it's like, you do see a lot of mulch in the spring happening. And I don't know. It ain't broken, in my opinion.
I wonder if the slope not only prevents the mulch from kind of washing away if it were rock, but also kind of protects what's underneath from washing away. Better than organic mulch, maybe. I do have concerns, as Jim did though, about this being so general across, you know, once it's established, it.
You could see a lot of rock and a lot of developments with how permissive this is.
Well, we've got a lot of discussion and a lot of really good thoughts. Are there? Does anyone have a motion that they'd like to make at this time?
I'll just throw it out there and we'll see if we, if we get our number here. I will make the motion for alternative two, recommend that city council deny the requested zoning ordinance changes to allow rock mulch.
All right, all in favor of alternative two, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm going to say nay. Motion passes.
So five, one then, is that what that?
Five, one, yeah.
All right. So this still will move forward to the city council with the recommendation of denial of the commission.
Now we'll move on to agenda item 10, commission comments. Anyone have any comments?
Anything going on November 19th?
Yes.
Wow.
We will have agenda items.
Okay. I was going to ask with the vote last night, are there, will there be anything with the new fire station that will come before the planning and zoning commission, do you anticipate?
I believe it's already zoned government because ISU owns it, if I remember correctly. If, if it's zoned residential, we'll probably come back with the resident, with the same government rezoning request. Otherwise, I do not believe you would see it.
Okay.
What does, I mean, we had some discussion a month or two ago about the need for a fire station in the north part of town. What does, does this take the place of that? Okay, so we still have that need then.
Yeah, this is solely about the functionality of station two.
Yeah.
It has a, it has a marginal effect on improvement of the service of the fire department at, for the community as a whole, but it was really about the station.
I mean, understandable concerns.
All right, any other comments?
I, once again, just when my son commented as we were driving back into Ames about, oh, this just feels so good. You know, and the way it looks and that takes a lot of work. And it makes a difference doing a lot of little things. And so I'd just like to express my appreciation.
All right, are there any staff comments?
We do not have any tonight.
Okay. Well, with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.